This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I was hoping to see if we could get Councilor Carey on the line before we started, but we will go ahead and call to order the Tuesday, March 16th, meeting of the Monmouth City Council. And we will start. Phyllis Bowman, our city recorder, and have her do the roll call, please.
Counselor Belts.
Here.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor McKeel.
Here.
Counselor Oberst.
Here.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Here.
Mayor Kuntz.
I am here. And for the flag salute this evening, Roxanne, will you please lead us in?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I know we have some presenters with us, but in the event that anyone here is for public comment online, I'll let you know that we do have time set aside for that. And we will, comments from the community will be entertained. We ask that folks let Phyllis Bowman know in the chat if you would like to speak. And these comments will be limited to three minutes. But I think everybody who's with us tonight is here with the presentation group. And here in the room, we again have our reporter from the itemizer observer. So we will go forward with the consent calendar tonight. You should have had in your packet the minutes of the meeting of March 2nd, including both our regular meeting and our council work session. And if there were no corrections or additions to those minutes, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Oberst and Counselor Belts. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Doesn't look like it. Thank you. Just a minute. For the mayor's report this evening, I just have a couple of quick things. One is, first of all, I will take mayor's privilege and wish my only child a happy 31st birthday. So to J.C. Heidi, happy birthday to my little girl. I have had the privilege this week of speaking to a couple of groups, including our Central Lions Club. I met with them last night and got a chance to catch them up on things going on in the city. Some great questions from that group, as we might expect. And I've also was, have recorded an interview with KMUZ Radio that will be broadcast on Friday. And then a link will be made available to that. And the main topic of conversation with Michael Rose on his Polk County report was our city hall project. So had a great opportunity to speak to him. And one other thing I was in on this week, we had a Salem Hospital is doing a call every couple of weeks with community members, including leaders of businesses and nonprofits, and some elected officials, and really catching up on what their efforts around coronavirus and COVID-19. And they were really, really pleased to be able to announce that last week Salem Help Alone has administered 100,000 COVID-19 vaccines. So absolutely amazing work by the hospital, both in Salem and in Dallas, and at their clinics and these mass vaccine clinics they're running. Again, really setting a tone. So, great news, Polk County, we're getting there. And with that, I will ask for any reports from boards and commissions. And Counselor Belts, then Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a report for the library board. Beginning Wednesday, March 17th, the library will begin allowing a limited number of people at a time into the library for brief browsing and checking out library materials. Patrons will be allowed in Wednesday, Thursday, Friday from 10 to between 10 and 4, following safety guidelines. They will limit the number of people allowed at a time. They must wear proper face masks. They're asking people to limit their time in the library to 20 minutes, with the exception of 30 minutes if you're on the computer. Restaurants still closed, restaurants, excuse me, restrooms still closed, no exceptions. Please follow safety distance. Mask and hand sanitizer will be provided. Limited number of computers available. Curbside pickup is still continuing. People will be greeted at the door and handed a flyer with all safety guidelines. They're counting on everyone's cooperation, which will help us so we can continue safely providing in library service. Thank you.
Oh, no. Thank you very much. Counselor Salinas Oliveros and Counselor Oberst.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 3rd of March, the Historic Commission met. And really, our conversation centered around Historic Preservation Month, that is coming up in May. And we talked about different celebration ideas and what we would be doing. And I was fortunate enough to give a presentation, only because someone didn't show, but I'm glad that I was able to fill in. And we talked about, and I shared about the Monmouth Independence History Project, and shared the timeline, our mission, our vision. And then we talked about, and the Historic Commission was, is gracious enough to consider they're looking at combining some, if they do like a scavenger hunt and brochures, that they may put in some of the timeline information about Monmouth as well in the brochure. And so we talked about, you know, having the scavenger hunt, having maybe pictures taken, maybe enter for a drawing, or something that the community can get involved in. And then we talked about some other different ideas to do around Historic Preservation Celebration Month. And we talked a little bit about opening up applications for our mural project and formalizing that. And then also about how to share with the community, how can we share what the Historic Commission is doing in a better way that our community members can be involved and ask questions and see all the good work that this commission has done and what we continue to do. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Oberst, and then Counselor Lopez.
Parks Commission on the 10th. So during, during this fiscal year, current fiscal year, there was leftover grant money that was aimed at buying a bike rack for Jones Woods Park. We were going to buy that from a local vendor. That arrangement has fallen through. I'm not clear on the details. Russ didn't really go into it. However, we do still have the high-wheeled bicycle bike rack that used to be in front of the former bike shop downtown. And Russ is going to look at, can we, between now and the end of June, get that refurbished and re-power coated and tagged and in the park? So that's a fallback position. He's also going to continue to research other options. Skate park update, the single biggest item is that they are going to be going out for detailed construction plans and cost estimates. Big part of that is so that they can start seeking grants and in-kind donations. I mentioned they've gotten an in-kind promise of the rebar they will need. And, you know, you got to cover it with concrete, and there's holes to dig and everything else. So, you know, get a more concrete estimate and hope we can get some, sorry, and see if we can get some action going there. I also mentioned a time or two ago, the grant applications for this year were coming in very slowly, and there was an outreach push which resulted in a record nine applications, including one from a young man who goes to West Salem High School and lives outside Dallas. Those have been processed, and the commission worked through them and has awarded five of them. And I have not checked with Russ to make sure that I could announce who got what. So I'm not going to do that and leave that up to Russ and the Parks Commission, because it's their grants. So the next meeting is on the 21st. And I think that's it. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I have a media, or a report from the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance Board of Directors. And the board did meet, as did the ORS 190 entity. I won't bore you with the details of planning for the budgeting process, which we're embarking as well, on as well. But I will share with you a little bit about the Built for Zero initiative. We received a really wonderful presentation on Built for Zero. The Continuum of Care region has joined Built for Zero. And what Built for Zero is, is it's a, really, it's a systemic way of trying to, trying to get to zero homelessness in specific populations. It's, it's a program that's, that's utilized in many other places. And, you know, just like many, many issues when we're dealing with, when we're dealing with homelessness, there's a lot of considerations and concerns about how to address the issue. As such, Built for Zero is an equally complex, although digestible, answer to at least parts of that. I won't try to recreate the, the presentation here, because I'm certainly not qualified to speak to that. But, but, but I will note that it's, it's a wonderful program that, you know, the Continuum of Care has, has joined that initiative. And, and we learned a lot more about, you know, about how that can be impactful in our, our communities. In other notes on that, there is growing, you know, growing interest in the creation of a rural community subcommittee on this board. We did not deal with this in the latest meeting, but I will encourage any listeners out there that might be in any way interested in helping or involved in serving the, you know, the houseless community, to please reach out to me if there's interest in learning more about this potential subcommittee. It's something that's, that's on the burner here for the spring to see if we can't get something organized. So that concludes my report from the Homeless Alliance. John, did you have a question for me? Are you waiting to go next?
He, he has a report.
Whenever my turn comes up.
It's your turn, Counselor Carey.
Okay, very quickly, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the Planning Commission sort of sponsored an open house to discuss the code updates that we've been talking about. And that was on the 11th. I did not attend that. Perhaps Marty will have some, something on that, or Suzanne later. But what I did want to note is that there's an online survey, you know, for the code update project, where the public can provide additional feedback, and I encourage others to participate. There's a link, I believe it's on the website, the city website. And that is open until March 26. Not sure how much interest that this is getting, because, you know, it's sort of like speaking in tongues when you're talking code. So it's a little difficult, but I would suggest that if you have thoughts on it, to please weigh in. And Rebecca, just let me put this little bug in your ear. I think in 2022, in October, that'll be the 60th anniversary of the Columbus Day Storm. And we mentioned that the other day, you know, I'm reading her so back. Betty Plude has put together a, a really quite a nice book, pamphlet, about what happened in Monmouth and the people that were here. You know, with some time, it might be fun to pursue that. I'd be happy to share the, the book with you. And there's other sources, but it's, I found it to be an interesting read, and might be fun.
Yeah, that's great, since, since a photograph from Monmouth is one of the iconic shots of that particular event in some of our young lives that lived here at that time. All right, thank you all very much for that. And we did have two applications to boards and commissions that I hope you got a look at. Keith Tierney has applied for the Senior Advisory Board. And Keith's interests, including working on a lot of senior rights issues. He was the Director of Senior Legal Services in another state, and has advised senior centers. And although limited amount of information, certainly seems like he will be a great addition to our board. And the other well qualified applicant for a board and commission, we have had a resignation on the Arts and Culture Commission Board. And we got a great applicant. Sharon Stokes Oberst is a retired professor of dance at Western Oregon University. But more than that, she has been involved in arts organizations, in representative organizations, doing advocacy, doing organizational things. Extremely qualified applicant for that position. So I would enjoy if I could receive a motion to nominate these two qualified candidates. Counselor Oberst.
Would it be a conflict for me to either make that motion or vote on it?
I don't believe so. This, unfortunately, this is an unpaid position. It, there is absolutely no financial benefit or avoidance of financial detriment to your family from your wife serving on the Arts and Council Commission.
Therefore, I would move approval of both of these candidates for boards and commissions.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Oberst for the motion, and Counselor Lopez for the second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. We'll get the word out to those folks and have them bring great new expertise to our boards and commissions. And with that, I will turn it over to Marty Wine for our city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. I just have three quick items for the city manager's report. And I'll be, I'll save some of my other news for Friday notes for later in the week regarding some of our department updates, although you heard many of the highlights in your board and commission reports tonight. A couple of weeks ago, I asked the council for some feedback about your preferences, about the way we are holding meetings and how we're using our time. And I just wanted to note to you that, beginning on April 6, we'll start to put a few changes into place for the way we're structuring our agendas. And also, the way we're going to, by structuring the agenda, what I mean is the order of how we'll go through some things during the council meeting. The two major changes that you probably can expect to see is in the order of the agenda, where our hope is to put our, the folks who are presenting, who are not from city staff or city council, up in the front of the agenda, and order those at the beginning of the agenda, and then put the report, such as we've just been all engaging in, at the end of the agenda. So that in just, the idea is to try to be polite to our presenters and make sure that they're not sitting through our whole meeting while, while we're dealing with other items of business. And I think we're going to continue to have both work session items and, and business meeting items on an agenda. So we won't be splitting those, which was a proposal that some of you talked about entertaining. So you'll also see on the agenda, we're going to try in, in a way to tighten up the time by noting the amount of time something is going to take on the agenda so that everybody knows what to expect. And some of this will rely on staff preparing ahead of time to give you complete presentations, or getting presenters' presentations to you ahead of time. So just a, just a heads up that you'll be seeing just some minor changes to the agenda, but it's all in the name of trying to use our time as wisely as possible. Let's see, two other notes for you. I also participated today in a radio interview for KMUZ. It's very similar to the mayor's. I talked with Michael Rose about our city hall project primarily. And so, you know, our hope, I'll be talking with you later tonight, with a briefing about how we're planning to communicate about our city hall project. And so that was, I saw that as sort of like the starting point for really increasing our communication in these next few months before the levy is voted on by Monmouth voters. And then Suzanne Duffner and I participated last week in a call, a phone call with Western Oregon University staff and, and us, just at my request. I reached out to President Rex Fuller when I first arrived in town, and asked him how the city and the university could be better partners. And we had a very productive brainstorming session about the ways that we might be able to work together on joint projects in the future. So I just wanted to note that that's happening, in addition to the University City Connections Committee that still meets regularly. And also, we've got lots of, of sort of idea generating going on in that regard. So I'm looking forward to future partnership projects with the university, as I know have happened in the past. That's all I have for tonight's report.
Thank you. Any questions for Marty? Phyllis, did we receive any public comments either prior to the meeting or on this call?
We did not, Mayor Kuntz.
Thank you so much. That moves us to our business agenda. And our first item, I believe, Suzanne Duffner has a, brought forth an issue for us. Suzanne?
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, members of the city council. I do have a staff report, which includes a request to initiate an amendment to the Monmouth City Code. The city received a letter from a local developer for residential land in Monmouth, requesting that the city council consider initiating this change to our city codes, specifically regarding an issue of the setbacks, the side yard setbacks for new houses that are built in the low-density residential zone district. So this is the setback, for those who may not be familiar, is a distance from the property line to the structure on, on the side of the house. So right now, our code requires a 15-foot overall setback between the two side yards. One side only can be a minimum of five feet, which would leave the other at a minimum of 10 feet. And the request is to drop that down to a 10-foot overall side yard setback with five-foot minimum on each side. And it wouldn't have any change to corner lots, which would still have the 15-foot setback. They have a 10-foot straight yard setback on, on the street side. So by way of process, our city code requires the council to initiate changes to our code. And then, once it's been initiated by the, the city council, then we, we schedule the public hearing. So there's two public hearings. There's one before the Planning Commission and one before the council. And we provide notice through the local newspaper of those hearings to allow for public comment on the issue. And then if the, the code change is approved, then it comes, becomes official through adoption of an ordinance. Staff estimates this processing, this code change would take probably about 15 to 20 staff hours to be able to process that with the notice preparation, and the staff report writing, and preparing the, the findings for it. There's not a huge direct cost. Basically, our only direct cost is through the newspaper advertisement that we're required to file with the Polk Itemizer. So it may bump into some of the priority projects that we've been trying to work on, but it shouldn't be a large staff time, because it's such a limited code change that we'd be looking at. And then I just, I noted in there that this is, this code change is actually something that we had flagged to look at in the current code update project that we got a grant for. So it's, it's a little unusual. We've worked in a number of small cities throughout the region, and definitely the standard setback is a 10-foot setback with five-foot minimum on either side. But it is a local preference issue, policy issue, and how that setback gets decided. And there are some building codes in place that make a minimum setback that we have to follow. But in terms of, you know, exactly where that gets set, we do have some local flexibility there. So I put together some of the alternatives. You can either choose to initiate the code amendment tonight, based on the requests that you've received. Or a second alternative would be to wait to process the code change, just as part of the overall code update project that we're working on, that we got the grant for. That would delay, the impact of that is that it would delay the actual implementation and being able to use that reduced setback for new buildings, new homes, by quite a bit, because the code update project probably won't result in adoption until later into 2020, 2022, since we're still at the, the first phase of that project. And then a third option is you always have the option to take no action on the request. So I could propose a simple motion there, if, when you're ready for that. And I would be one and happy to answer any questions you have about it.
Great. Thank you, Suzanne. And I had one question, which you did address, and that is, where would this typically come in the process of approving a development? Because we all know that project's been underway for quite some time. So I appreciate the staff report addressing there, there is an option to request a certain kind of development that allows those variances to the code, as I read it, as part of the development. And that's to have a PUD, right?
Correct. Yes.
Having that planned unit development, this, this would be moot, because a planned unit development would have it in the, in the actual development agreement. And so, didn't, didn't think about it at the time. And now we are looking at this change, right?
Yeah, I think the disconnect came, the developer isn't necessarily building on all the lots. So once the builders came into play, you know, they were like noticing that, wow, these are kind of tight lots to be able to fit primarily single-family homes, you know, that can serve an aging demographic to have one level. So, you know, I honestly, I think it's a reasonable request. And usually, when you have larger lots and larger setbacks, that can lead to more expensive housing, because it takes more land to accomplish that. But like I said, it is a city preference on, on where those exact numbers get set for the setback.
Great. Thank you. And Counselor Oberst?
So I was chair of planning when this current arrangement was put into place. And the idea at that time was actually trying to lower density a little bit and give people a little bit more elbow room in their homes. I'm not sure that a whole lot has been built, frankly, in that interim in single-family, since that was passed. I know the southeast corner of Cooper's View along Talmud Road, there's like six houses there that were put in under this standard versus the five, five-foot, five-foot standard that existed before. I don't know if anybody's aware of that. It does have kind of a different feel. With that said, we also seem to be moving in Oregon in general, and perhaps with our code review, toward increasing density all around anyway. So I just put those two facts on the table for council's consideration, that it was done deliberately, but maybe the, it's time to deliberate on that deliberately. So.
Other questions or thoughts? Counselor Carey, and then Counselor McKeel.
I guess my question would be, why doesn't this go to the Planning Commission first? You know, I, I would like to have a little bit more discussion on it. Counselor Oberst has provided some interesting detail there, but. Counselor Oberst has provided some interesting detail there, but, I mean, this is a, I mean, it seems that we're moving in that direction with this density craze, increasing our density. I, 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 I don't know that this really deals much with density. The, the lots lines are already drawn. It, it's just going to allow, you know, crowding on the sides, which, you know, may or may not be a problem. And I, and I recognize and appreciate the desire for a single story versus everything being two story. I, I guess, I, I'm sort of surprised this, I, I would like to see this go to the planning commission for some discussion and not necessarily be bound to the code amendment thing. But these people do, the planning commission deals with this kind of stuff all the time. And to me, that would be a, that would be a, a good step. That's going to be expedited. And, you know, I'm happy to move on it quickly, but I, I just, it seems to me there's a step that we've jumped over.
Suzanne, do you want to, you mentioned that we always need to initiate these.
Yeah, and actually, the, by our code, the planning commission can also initiate a code amendment. And so, you know, either body can do that. It's generally, I think they're an advisory body to the council. We want to make sure that we're tracking, since council ultimately makes the final decision on this. So I guess that was my logic for why it comes to the council first in terms of this is a request that's asking us kind of expedite a process. So we go to planning commission and depend on whether or not you want to give them the ability to initiate this. You know, it could, it could delay that process. But I think you're right, the planning commission will have some good input and they would provide that anyway through a public hearing process and providing council a recommendation.
Lane and then Carol, I'm sorry, and we'll get to your question. I just kind of wanted to wrap.
Yeah, I was just going to say, supporting what Suzanne just said, to refer this to the planning commission tonight to initiate review is not giving the direction necessarily to do it. They still have the opportunity to conduct hearings, evaluate and decide that it's not in the best interest. And they could come back to you with that recommendation. So you're not necessarily directing a foregone conclusion by asking the planning commission to initiate this.
Okay, thanks. And Counselor McKeel?
I actually, I really appreciate that comment, Lane. So that, thank you for that because I think it might be wise to go to the planning commission as Counselor Carey was saying. My, I, I like the idea that Ms. Dufner said about having the smaller lots give us a chance of having less expensive houses on those lots. However, I, I think with, sometimes it's not just the lot size that dictates the price of a house. And we could have houses squeezed in really close together that are actually very expensive houses. So I think it is wise to have the planning commission take a look at this and see what the people of Monmouth would like. I, for one, grew up near Gary where homes were really squeezed together and I liked the elbow room, but I am only one person in this town and, and that doesn't dictate anything. So I, I like the idea of having this go to the planning commission.
Thanks. Counselor Lopez and Counselor Oberst?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for all the wonderful, wonderful questions that preceded mine here. A lot of those came to mind and I think that's a really important discussion. It provided a lot of clarity. One, one piece that I did want to call out was, you know, Ms. Dufner, do, you, you, you mentioned that other cities have in place the five and five arrangement that's being proposed here. But this is, you know, very much just one piece in, you know, the very complex puzzle that is, that, that is the code. Are there any other, well, and maybe this is too open, maybe this is, you know, a, a display of why it should go to planning before we really seriously consider it. Are there any other things in the code that, you know, maybe we do a little differently than other cities that this would kind of have a dovetail effect with? I, I guess I'm just worried about the complexity of the code and opening up one piece with an unintended consequence elsewhere.
Yeah, sure. That's a great comment. And that's what gets us into trouble sometimes and we don't think of the cumulative impact of these little Band-Aid code amendments, I like to call them. So, you know, I, I think we've hit on with the code assistance project that there are some larger issues around our code and creating the different housing types that we want to encourage and that people can, are more likely to afford. So, you know, this, it, it's not obviously going to fix all of those by just target, doing this targeted amendment. But, you know, looking at the other setbacks, for example, in our code, I would say those are much more typical to have the, the 15 foot front yard and then the 10 foot rear yard. You know, those, those are pretty common. I mean, you'll see some variations, you know, five foot or a few feet here or there. But so, you know, I mean, I think we may bump into some issues with lot coverage because now you can have, you know, like a wider building envelope than you had before. So we'll just have to watch that a little more carefully on some of the smaller lots when folks are maximizing that use of their, their, what we call the building envelope where they can build. They may run into some issues with the lot coverage, but lot coverage is one of the things that we'd also flag to look at in, in code assistance in case we need to make some tweaks to that. So luckily, you know, we have this other larger code amendment process on the heels of this that I, I think we'll be able to catch if there are some unintended consequences that I'm not, you know, thinking of to be able to address those issues. So good question.
Oberst?
So first of all, I think Mayor Dalton would have to answer this, but I don't think we're going to see inexpensive houses in this particular development. I would also point out that what we're talking about here, that what the code calls for is five foot minimum 15 aggregate. So you can have five on one side and 10 on, on the other, down to seven and a half and seven and a half. So what we're really talking about is my shoulders width difference in the lot width, give or take a few inches. Okay? So I, I, I wonder if builders who are having a tough time with that might not dig a little deeper into their file cabinets to find a different floor plan that would fit. That's just my kind of lean on that. And then, Lane, I need an answer from you on if counselors were to go by those six houses on the southeast corner of town and see what it looks like when you have these wider setbacks? Would that constitute a site visit for future purposes or not? I just wanted to point out those houses are there and is that a problem?
No, you'd be okay. This is a legislative amendment. It's not a, it's not a judicial application.
Great. Thanks for that because I drive by them every day on my way to work. So I'd have to try to avert my eyes now. Thank you. Counselor Selena Salavero?
Yes, I just, two things. So we're looking at, and we're going to be looking at that later, some of our statements and the equitably, you know, being equitable and looking at the affordable housing and looking at policies that might be barriers to fulfilling what we want. And not sure this even plays a part in that. But wondering, you know, hearing from Ms. Dufner that this is something that was flagged to be looked at and wondering if that was something that goes with, with the presentation with the community with the affordable housing about the state and what the state is doing and how we need to maybe to go and change some of those, looking at our codes. And so I'm wondering, you know, in that sense, is this going to be a policy or something that's going to stand in the way of the affordable housing type goals is one? And then also, yeah, it's not a, a whole lot of space as, as Counselor Oberst was explaining, but I'm wondering, does that also discourage some builders from building? And will we be missing out on some potential builders who maybe don't, who want to have this, this code or this amendment initiated? I don't know. Either way, it could go either way.
Yeah, great, great comments, Counselor Selena Salavero, and questions. So I think just to respond to, would this change kind of help support some of the affordable housing goals that, that we're trying to move towards? I, I mean, single family detached, you know, it's hard to say that there's an affordable single family detached home, you know, especially in the Mid Valley. I mean, that, you know, that we know that there are challenges with that rate. But there is definitely a relationship between the size of the, the sizes of the lots and the price points that they're at. So, you know, if we keep this step, setback standard in place, it could drive developers to make the lots wider than the minimum and larger than the minimum rather than making them, you know, as, as the smaller size as possible. So, so I, I think that there is a potential impact, but, you know, I don't want to, you know, make you think that just by changing this as well, that we're going to have, you know, 100% more affordable housing. So I, but I think to your second comment about will this discourage, you know, other builders from building in Monmouth? It could, you know, I mean, I think it'll require the builders to, you know, search for potentially other building plan styles than what they might have already had. And it's, you know, I think some of it, what the developer was trying to go for by having different builders in the same subdivision was to provide a little bit more variety. So you didn't get the same three house plans over and over again, which, you know, from a design aesthetic standpoint, it's kind of nice to, to have a little bit of that variety. So, yeah, hopefully that responded to a couple of your questions.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to agree with Counselor Oberst from, from just my understanding of the project, that this will not be designed as an affordable housing project. And if we don't do this, then there'll be more two story homes on, on the property because those are the kinds of homes that they're building, the square footage they'd be looking at, I think. So the, I, I, I agree that I think the major goal of this is to provide some more age in place housing, which is also an attractive feature for a community. So I, I'm not sure that, that this particular development, even if we made them wait until we completed all of our code amendments, which is probably not realistic, would result in new affordable housing types that are currently not here. That, that's not the plan. That's not the business model as far as I understand. So I think the issue is literally, again, it's been pointed out, this is something that would be discussed in our overall code plan amendment. Do we want to move this forward a little bit to assist this particular developer who has been working on his property quite a while? Or have, no, let the process go a little longer, get a little more feedback, a little more insight by either sharing, having the planning commission review it first before and make a recommendation back to us, or by putting it off to be part of the overall amendment? So I think those are the questions. And I'll take quick comments from Counselor Oberst and Counselor Carey and then.
But my comment is simply, I would, I don't know if this council's initiate code amendment, but I would ask planning to have a look at this. I'd move that we pass this off to the planning commission for their input to give us some guidance.
Been moved and seconded to refer this to the planning commission and ask them to consider it as soon as they can and then give that feedback back to us. Suzanne, is that, what would that process look like?
I just wanted to clarify, so that would include like the public hearing? So they're actually getting public feedback at that as well, correct? Okay.
So they would do, yeah, they would do the hearing process.
Okay.
Well, if I can, just for my clarification then, are you authorizing them to go ahead and propose a code amendment in this? Or do you want them to come back to you first with just a recommendation and then possibly initiate, making sure that they, that they're operating within the guidelines you want to give them?
I think my initial idea was to have them give us guidance as to whether this change is warranted, but I would stand for a friendly amendment to suggest that they just jump into the process either way.
You get your motion and then Counselor Carey gets to decide on his second.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm in, in concurrence with that. I, I, I wouldn't, I'm anxious for a recommendation from them and I'm anxious for it fairly soon so we can be sensitive to the developer. So, but I feel like they deal with it all the time. So my second, I believe, is altered with Counselor Oberst's sort of amendment to his motion.
I'm, I'm sorry, so it's just again, so I can be perfectly clear. So you are authorizing the planning commission to initiate a code amendment, but you're not directing them to. Is, is that it? If they want to go ahead, they can come back to you with a proposed ordinance or a proposed amendment?
My, my motion would be for them to, to tell us if they think it's warranted. And as I said, I would, I would be willing to be amended by another counselor to say if they want, you know, feel that it is warranted and initiate a process that, that, and I, I would have to defer to Counselor Carey on whether his second stands in that case.
Okay, so you, you weren't amending your motion?
I am not amending my motion. I'm deferring to.
You just want a recommendation?
Yeah.
Whether, whether to initiate or not to initiate.
Right. We think this is worthy of, of starting a process or not.
Okay.
Simply because they're going to be looking at it regardless in the long term, probably. And so to that, you know, I would, I would be curious to know if they feel like this is worthy of jumping ahead with this particular piece of the long-term, bigger picture code amendment process.
And then would, would we then be the initiator? I mean, this is a technical thing. I, I'm, I'm anxious in a, in a recommendation from the planning commission in the most expedient way that we can get it.
So Counselor Carey, what your second is at the moment is to get a recommendation from the planning commission as to whether or not they would like us to initiate the change?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So everyone knows, that's all we're doing is referring it to them. They would come back to us and say, go ahead and initiate it. And then we will go through the hearings process. We will direct staff to go through the code amendment process, go through the hearings process and then make a decision. That's what we're voting on at this moment.
Suzanne, are you clear?
Yes, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, so all in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, thank you. So we'll take that to planning commission, get that on an agenda. Hopefully they can discuss that very soon and determine, advise us as to what they would like to see us do next. Okay, thank you. And with that, we, we do have, thank you very much, Suzanne. We have a presentation this evening from the Monmouth Independence Climate Action Task Force. We've had a brief visit with them earlier and they've been doing some excellent work. And I will turn this over. I don't know, Marty or you or Suzanne have been working.
I, I can say a few opening words just to the council and, council, in your staff report, what I've tried to do is outline the path that we've been on. report, what I've tried to do is outline the path that we've been on, both to talk with the Monmouth Independence Community Climate Task Force, and also your recent discussion in priority setting related to sustainability. You'll be talking about the priority setting and value statements related to this later in the evening, but we have members of the task force who are here tonight who would like to talk with you about requests that they made of the council last year. And as I mentioned, does align with some of the current priorities that we are talking about. So, during priority settings, we discussed a proposal to fund a community action plan with a potential in the upcoming budget to fund such a study. My hope is that tonight, together with the requests made by the task force and that priority in mind, that you can have a discussion together with the task force members about how you'd like to go forward. And the specific actions that the task force requested back in November included a recognition of the climate crisis through the adoption of a resolution, and a draft of that proposal is in your packet tonight. There are, there are steps that can be taken, probably in the context of a climate action plan for reducing municipal greenhouse gas emissions, which was another request of the task force. That, sorry, that's in the, in the proposed resolution. The other thing that the task force was suggesting, that maybe a board, a joint board between the two cities of Monmouth and Independence, who could recommend and advise to the council, the local actions that could, the kinds of actions that would address the climate crisis, and then also developing and adopting a climate action plan, which is something that you all discussed during priority setting. So, not to belabor, belabor this, I'd like for you to have a, a conversation with our task force members who are here tonight, Stephen Howard, Mr. Howard, good evening. And my hope is that we can take some guidance from, from your discussion about what you want the next steps to be.
Hello, council, mayor, and city staff. I know we've got a couple of different things that we can talk about, and I know you have a larger sustainability conversation going on at council. We brought this resolution to you last fall, hoping that this would sort of kick off the process of our, the two communities here working together to work on our carbon footprint and secure a more sustainable and healthy future for all of us. Our manager, Wine, has asked in some correspondence about what other cities are doing and what sorts of actions we might be looking for. And I've gone ahead and put together some slides to talk about that. I do want to say that while these are all ideas that we think are good, ultimately the whole idea of having a joint commission with Independence and Monmouth is to bring these sorts of suggestions to the councils to act upon. So, we may be doing a little bit of a caricature of the horse here tonight, but I know that everybody's curious about what exactly it means for two small towns to do something about climate. So, if I can get permission to run a presentation, we will run through the short slide deck, and then you can have a discussion. Softest, maybe I can jump here, it's simple, hang on one minute. Make this as quick as I can. See if it lets me do that now. I think it's gonna ask me to restart, this should be quick, my apologies. All right, with those settings changed, let's see if I can show you these slides. Doesn't quite get... I'll do it without sound if I need to. Don't know, so I've tried enabling, like, 100% or not yet?
Well, I can't enable you on both screens, or both, there's two of you now.
Oh, no.
Let me try to...
All right, thank you.
To Stephen Howard, will the world be safe?
My chat, it might be three of me in a second. This is not why I'm a software developer. All right, well, if my screen share permissions show up, I will start actually presenting this, but otherwise, I'm just gonna talk you through it, you all have a lot to talk about. So...
I made you presenter, you should have seen that, that means you hit the screen share button down at the bottom of your screen?
Yeah, it's still grayed out, I'm afraid my own multiple subs are causing you problems.
I have three Stephen Howards now.
That's what I was worried about.
I'll try one more time. The presenter. One, one of them says Stephen Howard presenter.
I'm ready.
It's offline. I changed that. Okay, oh, here we go.
All right, great. Thank you for your patience. All right, so the whole point of this, not only to talk about solving climate change as best we can, is to actually make it achievable for a community our size. There are a few different ways, we can talk about this tonight. As I mentioned, what are other small cities doing in Oregon that we might model off of? What sorts of principles ought we be holding while we're talking about these solutions? And then, your city manager asked for some examples of the sorts of actions that might be appropriate, so I've got eight examples here tonight. So, how are the other small cities in Oregon responding? I've got four examples here. We've got Silverton, which is a population about our size. In 2019 and 2020, they held a whole year on sustainability. They worked with some students from the U of O and one of their professors to generate some reports, which culminated in a recommendations document in September of 2020, which focused on six different areas. You'll find a lot of these different reports will have different focus areas, land use, transportation, buildings. There's a lot of overlap from city to city, so people are hitting on a lot of the same problems and solutions. Hood River, which is smaller than us, adopted a climate resolution in 2019, which actually, the resolution before you tonight is very similar to theirs. Being a small community, they are, they have adopted their county's energy program, which has an emphasis on climate and the energy, a local energy production. They have declared a net zero emissions target by 2035. Ashland, Oregon, I included a couple larger communities because, of course, we're suggesting that this should be a joint project for Independence and Monmouth together. So, Ashland had an action plan established in 2017, and then established a commission to help enact and guide the, the process in 2019. Their net zero goal is 2050. And then Milwaukee has a climate action plan that they started in 2018, and they, their plan is to revisit that every three years to keep it up to date. Their resolution passed in 2020, they called it their climate emergency resolution as opposed to a climate crisis resolution. And their goal is to be carbon neutral by 2045. So, while we consider what we might do, it's important that we establish the values and principles that we hold while we're considering solutions and what works for a community, for our community. I have a few suggested here, and obviously the cities and the joint commission ought to make this some of the early work. The first thing to note, of course, is that fossil fuels were always useful, but the point of using them was never using them for the sake of burning fossil fuels, that wasn't the point. The point was to eat our homes, cook our food, get to work. In business, this kind of thinking process is called the jobs-to-be-done framework. The classic example that everybody in business likes to use is when people buy a drill, it's not because they want to drill, it's because they want a hole in the wall. So, if you can really identify what it is that people want, you can then consider the alternative ways that we might get what they want. And so, what we're really talking about when we're talking about climate solutions is finding replacements for the carbon emissions, not replacements for the activities and services that people value. Something else to note, a big push in climate conversations right now is about electrification. There's a lot of things that the technology is already there for, to take things that we use fossil fuels for every day. Everybody jumps to cars, but there's a lot of other places we use fossil fuels for, of course, where we already have existing solutions that are electric. And then if you clean your electricity grid, which we are very fortunate to have a fairly clean electricity grid to start with, then that buys you climate reductions by electrifying. Of course, if you're moving all of these fossil fuel uses to electrification, then you're maybe going to need a lot more electricity, which is one of the big places where efficiency comes in. Efficiency isn't really a goal in and of itself, but it makes moving away from fossil fuels that much easier. There is sadly, of course, things that are already happening due to climate change. And for the well-being of our communities, it's important that we take steps to manage those effects as best we can, whether that's severe weather events, or whether it's just day-to-day living. Things will get more difficult, and we'll have to do something about it. And finally, it's no good to talk about climate solutions if they're either too expensive or too complicated for the community members to live with or implement or sign up for. If we leave people behind, not only will you get pushed back, not only will it be unfair, but we will want solved. So, solutions have to work for the people with the least means, as much as it does for people with the most. So those are four principles that I thought would be a good way to start the discussion. But what probably everybody's super curious about is some actual steps that we can take as a small city. So here are eight, there are many, many others, but these have a broad, serves as a survey a broad range of topics that can be considered. The first is probably the boldest. There are many cities in the US and around the world who are talking about eliminating new, new fossil fuel uses in, in their buildings in particular. There are some that have already passed ordinances that require no natural gas lines to new construction. The logic, of course, being that we gotta stop the bleeding before we can move in the right direction. So, there, as I said earlier, there are already existing affordable technologies for replacing hot water heaters, stoves, heat pumps for heat instead of furnaces, that are already in common use. And this wouldn't be a big lift for developers, I don't believe. And it would buy us time to tackle the existing fossil fuel uses that already exist in our communities. I was told at a recent meeting that not everybody knows what the urban heat island is. Very briefly, cities tend to, based on their, the surfaces of their roads and their roofs and other built environment materials, be significantly warmer than their surroundings. This tends to increase demand for electricity, demand for cooling in the summer, they don't cool off as readily at night, and so you'll get increased needs for air conditioning and power usage. And of course, people who can't, who don't have air conditioning or can't afford the higher electricity bills will be struggling as things get hotter. So there are simple things you can do to reduce the urban heat island effect, a lot of it is tree coverings near streets, lighter roofing materials or roofing materials that don't absorb as much sunlight. Green roofs are a more unusual option, but they also look fantastically well, as well as providing all of the plantings, both roofs and trees, provide evaporative cooling for a city. I know that Monmouth has worked with some local churches and other organizations for wintertime shelters, for when things drop to be very cold. We will probably need to also think about times for extreme heat, whether that's people who don't have a home, or people who do not have, do not have, cannot afford air conditioning. The last two or three fire seasons have also shown us what happens to air quality due to the more frequent fires. So, this will be something that we'll need to coordinate as a community. I circled with the title for this slide, but came down to useful walkability. I know that on planning, we're actually doing a lot with the, the code version grant to help improve getting people places more easily with less car dependence, but the idea is to put people's, most of people's needs, daily needs, within a comfortable walk. Not that it's merely possible to walk, you know, to school, to work, to pick some microchips to meet a friend for coffee, but that it's actually desirable and comfortable to walk places. Making walkability a big tent pole to your plan will make it possible for people to reduce their footprint without even asking them to replace their vehicles with something they may not be able to afford yet. We've been talking transit in these communities for a few years now, I know there's a study underway that Independence is leading. I was personally part of some of the early discussions around the trolley service, and so I am hoping something comes of that. But what transit is really good at is taking small pockets of walkability, neighborhoods where people can get to places they need to be, and helping supercharge that walkability and giving them to other walkable nodes. And doing so would reduce private vehicle traffic. Check. Okay. And then, sort of, both on a sustainability point of view, but also on an economic development point of view, I think it's very important that the city work with local developers and local skills, tradespeople to cultivate local expertise. When we're talking about, say, increasing solar or changing how we build buildings to be radically more efficient, you know, the people who work here and build here now have a certain set of skills, and we don't want to have to keep asking people to come from Portland to designer buildings, or when I talk to people about installing solar, the experts are, they're, some of the closest ones are in Silverton. That adds to the costs of new construction, adds to the costs of having tradespeople come from farther away, they build it right in their building. And it also takes money out of the local economy, that we could be paying people to do these improvements right here and there in back end. Local solar and battery storage for electricity has multiple... has multiple advantages. Not only does it reduce our demands for electricity outside of our local grid. And it's a nice, easy source of clean electricity. But in times of disaster or power outages, earthquake, we all keep hearing is coming. Having local power generation would be a a boon for the community where we may be waiting a very long time to get back online. So how we accelerate solar and battery installs, some of it's going to be looking at regularizing our regulations and our permitting process with other communities so that there are no surprises for installers who come to put solar on people's roofs and batteries in people's garages. There may be things that local banks need to provide climate loans on favorable terms, because a lot of the things that solve the climate crisis tend to flip the costs, whereas the older way of doing business tends to be cheap upfront and then a little more expensive over the long run. At least for now, a lot of solutions tend to be a bit more expensive upfront and then cheaper in the long run. So there may be some financing that needs to happen or be made available to homeowners and property owners. And that is something that the city might be able to help arrange. And I'm, of course, very interested in knowing what Monmouth and Power and Light can do for us since we have, we are very fortunate to have our own local utility. Our good people and staff. And then finally, number eight. And this is going to be the the long, slow, steady progress that would have to happen on top of everything else is finding ways to help people retire their existing fossil fuel use. There are certain things that we simply can't mandate. Nobody's expecting a small town like ours to say everybody's going to buy an electric car. But what resources are out there for community members to weatherize their homes and swap out fossil fuel appliances for electric based ones? What sort of rebates can they take advantage of? What sort of rebates can we offer since we do have a local utility? I'm sure there's dozens and dozens of ways to do this. Part of what the joint commission ought to be looking at is the most effective ways to do that specifically in this community. Those are eight ideas. I'm all out of slides, so we can circle back around talking about the resolution. If you have any other questions, there's at least four members of the task force here tonight. And we'd be happy to continue this discussion.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Steve. When you mentioned last fall and coming to us, and I know each time we've kind of said some of us need to hear something a little more concrete, right? And I really appreciate the effort that went into this presentation that completely helps me understand it quite a bit better. So for the non-environmental scientists among us, I really appreciate that. Now, that certainly helps us be able to sort of move some of this forward. And I know some of my fellow counselors have questions, so I'm going to let them go first. And I definitely have sort of a process question. I see Counselor Oberst first and then Counselor McKeel.
I find this all to be just absolutely fantastic and steps in the right direction. And Stephen, you're right. I think people figure, well, what's a little town like Monmouth going to do? But, you know, it takes grains of sand to build a beach and wear a grain of sand. And if we can get a whole lot of other grains going, we'll have ourselves a climate plan. I have been an advocate for solar for a long time. When I last looked at it, it cost about seven, I think, I think the break even point was seven cents a kilowatt hour, which is just about where Monmouth Power and Light was. I think panels have come down significantly in price. And I would love if there is some way for us to begin a solar panel encouragement process of MPL. And finally, I saw an interesting piece go by. We think of wind power and we think of giant windmills up the gorge. And this was a couple of examples of some folks who developed wind power that are simply a vertical tower about 20 feet. One of them blows in the wind just a little bit and as it sways back and forth, that motion is used to generate power. There is another one that the inventor is proposing for installation on streetlights next to highways, because all of the wakes that cars create as they drive by would make these things move and create more than enough power to power the light that they're mounted on and have some despair. So if that's the sort of thing we need to consider in our code amendment process, that can you at current time mount a 20 foot pole on the end of your house to harvest wind power? I don't know. And we ought to make sure that we have room in our code for alternate energy production onsite like that, microgeneration. It was, you know, again, enough people generate enough power and who needs Bonneville, right?
Thanks. Counselor McKeel, did you have something for the group?
We're right here.
Counselor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you very much, you know, Mr. Howard and the other members of this, of this group that have come here tonight. You know, this is really an issue that, that every little step helps and those little steps might not be fulfilling. But that's what it's going to take from both us as well as other, you know, entities throughout the world to be able to combat this problem. I noticed that one of your, one of your proposed actions was to create an intercity, an intercity commission or board that would operate between Monmouth and Independence as an advisory board. I personally feel that this is something that we could do relatively quickly that could have wide ranging impacts in a lot of those little places that we're looking to find these, find these efficiencies and build these wins. And I, maybe this is a better question for perhaps Marty or our city manager or Madam Mayor. How would we go about initiating this, you know, intercity, intercity commission? And how would we find ways to make those recommendations impactful for Monmouth as opposed to being a commission that's, you know, just a feel good commission?
Do you have a preference about who answers this?
Well, you can go ahead and I'll add if I
I am hoping, I'm hoping that Mayor will also add to this. I, I think that having, having heard the discussion most recently by the independent city council about this question, I think that the idea of assessing the interests by both cities, maybe through a joint council meeting, would be one way to go forward. Procedurally, I've not seen a joint, a joint commission between the two cities. So that's a, I have that process question as well. But I think that I'm understanding if there's shared interest between these two cities would be a first step.
Yes, and I agree with that. I think they, they, I think, have sort of settled on really talking through this resolution that's being presented to us and kind of doing a work group on that, maybe potentially among their council. That's maybe a thought they were having. And we could determine certainly if there is a potential for a less than majority member of our council who wants to work on that, potentially connect with independents. I think this is the question. I, I think Stephen Watt and Carol and Counselor Core and what you're hearing tonight is we and Mr. Karen's, what we're, we are interested in moving something forward. It really does meet with the value statements we are developing. It matches our planning process. So I think what you'll find is we are very supportive of moving something forward. And if we spend some time really talking about the process of how to take the suggested resolution you've brought, these maybe eight points you've brought, and how we would workshop those to come up with something that we could visit with independents about, and then again, a potentially a joint council meeting, which we, we can have those. We can have discussion of those. We don't make decisions at them. But that is certainly something that we could move forward and potentially when we've done that in the past, it's typically been if we have a fifth Monday in a month, because that would be, or Tuesday, because that would be a Tuesday night that not, that neither city has its own council meeting. And just looking at that, there is a fifth Tuesday in June. So that would be the first opportunity really for a joint presentation and potentially discussion. And if we wanted to do some, some smaller work between now and then, Counselor Lopez, that might be, move us forward towards a better discussion on that June date, if everyone is amenable to that. It's right before Fourth of July weekend, so it might be a tough weekend to get folks to concentrate on this. But that, that would be one, one way we could move forward.
I, I have a follow up to this specific item for, for Mr. Howard. And, or, and or anyone else with the group that would care to speak. I, you know, I, I love the concept of the intercity, the intercity committee. I'm concerned about the amount of time that it would take to set that up and have that be impactful. If that amount of time is warranted and it gives all of this more meaning and more weight, then absolutely. But if that amount of time is just going to be, you know, deliberative and hold us back from creating maybe say just a Monmouth advisory board perhaps or, or commission. We, we would be able theoretically to do that relatively quickly in comparison at least, and the path would be clear. So what, what, what specific benefits does the intercity board offer? And, you know, how do you weigh those against the benefit of getting something moving more quickly?
Yeah, and that's, that's a tough question. I think, and other people on our task force should probably weigh in here, but my feeling is that having both cities working together is a matter of resources as much as anything else. I mean, there's certainly things that either city could do independently perfectly well, if you're talking about transit, if you're talking about. I don't know, there's probably other things. So it's the way that comes to mind, of course. There are certain things that only become possible at a certain scale. And I certainly try to part it, the slides that were presented tonight to work at Monmouth scale or at an independent scale, for the most part. We do act as one community much of the time, though, so it certainly was a natural fit to consider doing something. But I, I think we are all concerned about drawing the timelines out rather than we need to be.
Thank you for that. I appreciate the concept of, of scale and that, that, that gives us another scope to look at this through.
Yeah, I think in addition to that, not only the resources we have to put towards it internally, but the resources we can draw upon externally, right? It's, it's much easier to attract outside investment, to attract grants, to attract government support when we are in partnership. So I, I think there's some additional advantages to that going down the line, even if it puts off the actual scope of the project of an extra month or two. I had Counselor Salinas Oliveros, did you have something? And then Counselor Carey and then Counselor Oberst.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Howard, for being here and everyone else who on the committee who's here. This is really great work and it's important work. I always consider and think of, you know, my family and their future. And so this is, this is really exciting. And I, I guess I'm, I'm more leaning on the side of what Counselor Lopez was saying. I do, I do think that working together, both cities would be valuable. The time is what I'm concerned about as well. And I think maybe if both of our cities can come up with some great concepts and then come together during the times when we, when we find certain aspects or sections that we can discuss together, and maybe that will save us some time or we can start quicker. The other thing that comes to mind is once, once our cities really have something concrete in place, this is what our city is doing towards improving our climate, towards improving our future, then it's going to be a matter of this is what you can do. And so, because I always, the question that came up in my head as you were talking, it's like, well, what can I do? What can I do? So once we have the city concepts, thinking about how we can bring in and engage our entire community and, and making it more, I guess, real and more personable, like, okay, so you don't have money for solar panels, but you can also do this, or this is something else that you can do. So I think this could be a wonderful joint effort and really showing our community that we care about the future of, of Monmouth and Independence. So, so thank you for that.
Counselor Carey, that was to you and then to Counselor Oberst.
Yeah, I, I thank you, Stephen, and the committee. One of the things that, and I would agree that if we could find a way to work together with independents, it would be, it would make all kinds of sense. I mean, you know, you get to win co and all of a sudden things change. I mean, come on, you know, it, it will work like two cities, one community, all that stuff. I think one of the things that we need to define is, is, you know, and in the resolution, it talked about the city of Monmouth, capital C, capital M, which suggests the governmental entity. And, you know, which would be reflected in the city council. I think it would be easier for us to, to craft something that was city council centric initially. And then the degree to which we could expand that out in, in other ways, ordinance, code, all that would be good. You know, I, I thought the aid that you provided, a city level, were interesting. I, I, you know, I'm not sure when you talk about comfort tire existing fossil fuel use and then talk about electricity, I, I don't know whether, we have a lot of, we don't have much electric, electric generation coming from fossil fuels. We're primarily hydro, which is, you know, our Bonneville connection. Which leads me down to the next one that, that we'd want to make sure, and I think this is why it'd be good to work with independents, you know, we could localize this. A lot of the things in the, in the, the proposed resolution were, you know, sort of boilerplate from, you know, you know, larger entities. And, but, but I think we could do that locally if we worked with independents. So I think there'd be some real advantage to that. And thank you again.
Thanks. Counselor Oberst and Counselor McKeel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Stephen. I'd like to go back to something I did 10 years ago, which was served on ODOT's greenhouse gas reduction task force. And they have set a target of trying to bring Oregon's greenhouse gas from transportation down. And the, the focus there, the modeling that came out from that group was, it's all about electric vehicles. And we're starting to see that turn. And that's where Monmouth's drop in fossil fuel consumption will come from. And what can we do as a city to help people have backup power so that when Bonneville's line is dropped by a tree or a fire, they can still charge their car? they can still charge their car? What can we do to help people install the charging infrastructure in their garages or the driveways? You know, we've got, the switch to electric vehicles is not going to be seamless or quick or cheap, but I do believe it's coming. The cost of the vehicles continues to drop like a stone. As far as a joint body goes, the thing exists already. Stephen is here as his representative. The question becomes, do the cities formally recognize that body? Is it a different body? Do the cities have appointment power to that body? We have a model in some ways in MINET of the two cities coming together to create a body that, you know, provides advice. Now, in that case, that body provides advice to MINET, but the MINET Board. But we certainly should be able to create a body, and maybe we start with one for just Monmouth, but the long-term goal being, let's have a joint climate task force of some sort with the city of Independence that provides guidance and advice to both cities, both city councils. I'm not sure Pacific Power will listen to our input, but perhaps Monmouth Power and Light could listen to that group's input, et cetera. You know, and let's see if we can't create that body in the long term, in the short term. Stephen, keep coming and giving us information. You know, let us know when you see things that this city might be able to adopt that would have an impact. Council, let's move forward with formally recognizing a body, and let's get together with our neighbors and talk about how to make that joint thing happen. A body that is not, does not have necessarily authority, but certainly has the authority to give advice to the governing bodies of both cities.
The nice thing about that is, we don't, I mean, that, this isn't MINET, so we don't have to have an intergovernmental agreement. An advisory body, which we already have a fabulous one, can continue to advise us in a very informal capacity. It has members from both cities. We take their advice, we formulate, we move forward. So that's the nice thing. We don't have to have an official board or commission to say that we are, this group are recognized community experts, and we're going to continue to invite them in to review the work we're doing. So just, it can be as informal as that also. So Counselor McKeel, did you have something? And then Lane Chutterly.
So, Mr. Chutterly, do you need to speak first? Because we were talking about this joint group, would that be more appropriate?
Well, if I may, I should know the answer to this, but is, Stephen, is your, is the Community Climate Task Force, that's not at this point a governmental advisory committee? You're independent, you're self-starters?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so, you know, I'm trying to get my head around some of the procedural elements of this as well. Certainly, you can continue to hear from the Climate Task Force. They can meet as a private body under whatever kind of process they want to use. The only time they interface with you is at a council meeting. Yeah, okay, so I just, I wanted to make sure I thought that was the case, but it was beginning to sound like maybe I've missed something at some point and that they had been officially sanctioned as a governmental entity. Okay, that was my own clarification, thanks.
And so, can I go now, I'm back to the, thank you. So I was wondering about this resolution that we had in the packet. Is this something that the city council has passed already? Or maybe a place to start is to get this resolution to something, I mean, it looks pretty good. I'm not being critical, but is this at a point where we could formally pass this to really start this ball rolling? Also, I think it might be good to look at some of the low-hanging fruit that exists within the resolution. So I know we're working on priorities this evening also, and in that is sustainability. And the city staff is going to kind of look at their own plans for how they could bring this apart, bring this about. And so is it something reasonable to ask the city staff to evaluate their practices to see if there's anything from this resolution, or even more creative, what they can come up with, to see what they are doing in order to meet, to change practices that would make us more climate-friendly? And along with that, I think in so many ways, this slow start on trying to do something about climate change, I think so many of us have, instead of a look of a solution, we have a look of panic. You know, every time we see something fall from Antarctica and falls into the ocean and the Arctic Circle shrinking and the fires, we have a sense of panic, but not necessarily a sense of action of what we can do. And when recycling started years and years ago, I remember recycling, it was like, oh, wow, it's like when I was first married, so that's like 44 years ago. And we were recycling, and I would have people laugh at me that we were cleaning out cans and squashing things and putting them into recycling. And now nobody even thinks about it. They just throw it into the recycling bin, because there's been this purposeful education over the years, and now they don't even need it, right? Because everybody does it. But purposeful education about what you can do to recycle, and why that's important to recycle. And I'm wondering, and I'm going to ask Mr. Howard and your group with all the work you've done, can you help us come up with something every month that could go into the newsletter? Just kind of throwing this idea out there, maybe it won't work, but something that can go into the newsletter every month that says, just making this up, like, you can change, you can stop climate change, here is a suggestion to do this month. To make it so that it becomes a normal process of our thinking, not just the panic of climate change, but the actions that we can take with that. I saw this happen when I was, years ago, when I was in PTA, and I suggested that we start a recycling center in our local school, and I got laughed out of the PTA meeting. But the chair of the PTA said, no, go ahead, Carol, let's do some fact-finding, see what we should do. And I called the city, and they said, we're going to start recycling curbside within a year. And so I talked to the chair, and we decided not to do anything. Well, then the city started sending out information every month with the utility bill about recycling and why we should do it. And a year later, we had a PTA meeting, and a member of the PTA who laughed at me the most actually called me a name about something about a stick and stuff like that, and said, whatever happened to that really good idea about recycling? So that was such a lesson for me of how you can shift the mindset by a constant messaging about what they can do. And it would be nice to see that low-hanging fruit, and I know you have it already in your proposal, Mr. Howard, so thank you for that, or the resolution. But it's so critical about the education piece and helping people see how they can be active instead of fearful. And I'm sorry, that was a really long thing that I talked very long.
Well, if we can unwind that going in reverse order, we have started compiling educational information on our website already. I'm sure it can stand to be expanded. We're trying not to overwhelm people with the first pass. Having worried about this for 20 years, I have driven myself crazy and my family crazy on a number of occasions trying to do every little thing. And that's not what we want to do to people. So, yes, we would definitely be interested in helping craft some sort of continuing messaging or education. I think that's probably a good activity for us. But I know you had a lot of procedural questions at the beginning of your statement, Counselor McKeel, and I definitely, I'm not the person to answer that.
And I can take some of that. So your initial question about what do we do with this resolution? So just, it is a proposed resolution here. If there was a motion tonight, and a second, and a majority of folks said adopt it or have staff drafted into our normal resolution form, that would be it, right? The other thing to do is to take a smaller work group and see, you know, if there's any changes we want to incorporate, things we want to add or change for our purposes. I'll just remind you all that this work about sustainability is in our 2122 goals. So again, I'm not trying to put all the brakes on, but this is, we have a year in our goals. We've given ourselves a year to do some of this work. So it can certainly be done far before the end of June 30, 2022, but I'm not sure if our staff is ready to jump in and do a lot of work on this prior to June 30 of 2021. I will, Marty, we'll talk to you a little bit about kind of initial conversation she's had with department heads. And Mr. Oberst, go ahead, and then I'll just have her talk a little bit about that.
I'm going to defer to Marty, because I think what I have to say wraps around what she has to say.
Okay, well, I guess we'll see, Counselor Oberst. I just had two comments about this work. I think that Counselor McKeel, to your question about what the department heads could do in terms of identifying low-hanging fruit, I see in Monmouth's, I'm going to just call it in Monmouth's Climate Action Plan, step one is the very kind of assessment that you're talking about. So we're looking, where we look at our current practices and we say, what are the actions that we can take toward sustainability? So the idea of the broader Climate Action Plan is, it's the first step where we ask ourselves, what are we doing now? And at the same time, identifying, and with the task forces, you know, great work even tonight to be able to tell us, well, what are things that we could do? That would be a very early step in a sustainability action plan. The department heads and the staff here in Monmouth, as the mayor indicated, are in very early days discussion about, what does this mean for us? What does it mean for our city practices? But also, what is it, you know, what should we be looking to do? And I think that in that respect, the task force and the ideas that you've brought tonight are a great first step to help us understand where we could go. So I'm just, I think what I'm saying is, it's, we're at a starting point. And that's where, and we would, you know, need the help of the task force and also some structure around what a plan would look like to be able to start acting as is being requested.
Counselor Oberst, did that?
Well, what I was going to say is, at the end of the staff report, there's a list of three alternatives, which are all, to me, absolutely on the nose. Sit down and talk with Independence's city council and see if we have interest in a joint body. Have an opportunity to take this resolution that's been presented tonight. Look it over, have the time to give it a good read, send some suggestions to Marty. Let Marty work on turning it into something that works for the city and works for staff. Run it back by Stephen, let Stephen take it to his people, you know, bounce it around a little bit. While climate change is urgent, I think that another month or so is not going to break the bank on this one. Let's approach this resolution carefully. And then finally, I think it would be important to have that public outreach opportunity before we actually adopted this resolution. See if there are some things some folks would like to add to it or subtract from it. Have a little bit more council discussion around it. I'm not ready to vote tonight to adopt this resolution. I am ready to say, holy mackerel, this is a good resolution, Stephen, it's very impressive work. Let's see how it fits with what we're trying to do, and let's talk to Independence about it.
I have to thank the members of our working group to putting together this presentation. I'm going to take credit for it.
Give them a big thumbs up for me, it's great work.
Counselor Carey, and then I'm going to check in with Marty and see if she sort of has a rough direction from us about what else we can do here.
I have two points. There's a lot of lacking footnotes and definitions that are needed at some point in the, in the proposed resolution. Those can all be worked out. One of the things that I didn't see in the resolution or in the city level, each city level actions was, and though it was mentioned, I didn't see anything that would, that reflected the impact on what we might term as vulnerable communities. All this is, while it may seem simple, it's expensive. And I just didn't see any of that short of appropriate financial and regulatory assistance from Polk County. And it's probably not likely there, wishful thinking at the region, state and federal authorities. So I think we're going to need to be cognizant of that, and I'm sure that we can get there. The other thing that I think we need to decide, and this would be just as our council, is how does this interface with our overarching sustainability piece? Would this be a way in which, an example of our sustainability? Probably, that would be a pretty good way to go about it. Sustainability is much broader than just this, as we've talked about. So we just need to figure out how we're going to sort of meld the two when we get the two.
Thank you, Counselor Carey, that's great. And, yeah, I think, I like, I would suggest that we take the staff recommendation, and again, instead of alternatives, I agree with Counselor Oberst, we wrap those together and say that perhaps our next steps include further discussion with the Independent City Council. And certainly Marty and I can talk to the city manager and the mayor and determine for sure what their next steps were and how that fits, and provide specific feedback on this particular resolution. If each of us do that individually and submit that to Marty, she can gather that, just as she's been gathering other group work from us. And then I like the idea of building a public outreach component. It certainly meets our other goals. And so, working with this task force on, you know, how we do that, maybe getting some other input would be great. Again, sorry, it stretches the process out, but I love the idea of starting together on this education. Just to let you all know, there's another little piece to this. Marty and I have started the process of considering applying to have a rare intern come to the community. And one of the, yeah, one of the things that these interns do a lot of work in is in the area of sustainability. They have some particular expertise and connections. Those connections are actually to professors and institutes at the University of Oregon. So this would be the kind of thing that we could task to a rare intern and really get some graduate-level work out of somebody like that who would help us really continue this, flush it out, and make this a project. Again, hate to draw this out, but if we apply and are successful, we would have that person here in September. So that work would not, you know, to have extra staffing for it would be down the road a little bit. Other than that, some of this we can easily do with the lovely and talented staff we have sitting right next to me. I commit her to do a little bit of this to kind of keep it moving forward. But if you would give us some grace to do some of that back But if you would give us some, some grace to do some of that backend work and think through. But I think really having particularly this intern work on this public outreach piece help us develop a robust process for that. I think that would be a fantastic project that would benefit both cities and the, the work we're trying to build. So Counselor Oberst, Counselor Lopez. Make it quick.
Do rare interns come at a, do rare interns come at a cost to the city? Or are they, and if so, what, what are we looking at? But in, as a general statement, yes.
It costs 25, we, the city's contribution is $25,000. So, but if we, if we put that together with some other types of work, it could be eligible under the new CARES Act money that we're getting, for example. So anyway.
And that's for a full year intern, is that correct?
Full year, full time intern with, that comes to us trained, oriented and ready to work.
The last one we had trapped peacocks.
Well, we're thinking of higher level work than that. Counselor Lopez, did you have something to wrap us up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And this is perhaps pertinent to our next steps here. It's my understanding that this, that this resolution was delivered or has been delivered to both the independents and Monmouth councils. And before we get our fingers into this too much, I, I would suggest that as a first, a first positive step toward jointly moving forward to, with this as a community with independents would be to begin speaking with independents about a joint council session to hopefully come up with a version we can both agree on and pass together.
Great. Thank you for that comment. I believe Ms. Wine has a meeting with Mr. Pesimer tomorrow, and I'm guessing it may be on the agenda. So, and I will be meeting with Mayor McArdle next Monday, and I'm pretty sure it'll come up again there. So, great. Thank you all for that discussion. Thank you again, Stephen and Shannon and Carol and, well, Michael. Kathy, really appreciate bearing with us, educating us, supporting us as we try to, to do this new work. So thank you.
Very grateful for your enthusiasm and if we can continue talking in the meantime, while nothing's on paper yet, we'd be more than happy to do so.
Thanks. All right. With that, I'm going to ask indulgence for a few minute break before we move into the discussion about not only our city hall project communications update and our discussion of those council values wrapped around this. So I have 8:24. I'm going to go for 10 minutes if y'all don't mind. So I'll, we'll be back here at 8:34. Thank you. Mute, Counselor. You can see it.
So Cease, was it, was it your direction that we should provide suggestions on that draft resolution to Marty? Or are we just going to sort of let that perp for a little while?
Sorry, we're playing with the microphones. Yeah, I think if you do have ideas, go ahead and forward them to them. I think the idea that we may try to do this more in concert with independents was floated, but definitely thoughts you have now, it's not going to hurt to gather those. So yes, she'll take those. All right. Thank you all for returning. And so we can continue with our business agenda. We have a very brief item and then a more extensive item. So we will, I'll turn it over to Marty Wine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. The next item on your agenda is truly just designed to give you an update about our communication efforts related to our project to replace the city hall. On the city side of communicating, we've now filed the measure and have a measure number. And so in light of that, what we're trying to do is ensure that at this point, all of the information that we're putting out is neutral and factual. But also in that spirit, we are trying to, in these next few months, provide as much information as possible about the need and the nature of the replacement project as possible. And we have updated our website and have a bunch of other steps that we're going to be taking to communicate. So truly, this was meant as a staff report to you to inform you about what our efforts are that are underway for the city to be providing information. And a lot of it resides now on our website. And between now and, and election day, we are working on putting together some communication materials so that we will be mailing and sending and providing that information to our community before May 18th. So I won't go into depth about what's in the staff report unless you all read it and have questions. But I mostly wanted you to know what's out there at this point. And I would also take your suggestions in your travels and talking with the community about what you're hearing is of interest. And I'll leave my report there and take any questions or suggestions you have.
Counselor Oberst?
It's my understanding that the executive committee of the political action committee met on my patio on Sunday. And if anybody has any questions, please contact me off, offline. I'd be glad to fill you in on where we are.
Great. Thank you very much. So that moves us to a discussion about our value statements. We had a great opportunity to really kind of work through some of that and really appreciate the Marty mashup of bringing, just sort of melding the written ideas that she had. We had this slated for a 45 minute discussion. We are about 22 minutes away from a nine o'clock deadline. So we'll carry the conversation into nine o'clock and see the appetite for continuing it a bit beyond that. So.
Marty. Actually, Madam Mayor, you did a great job of queuing up what my effort in the past week and since the council's last discussion was, as you said, to mash it up. So the, for those of you who did work ahead of time to be thinking about these statements of the council values, thank you for the work that you did. And for those who didn't, the whole effort here was to have a discussion draft before you so that you could talk about the concepts related to values for each of these three areas that you've identified, diversity, equity and inclusion, communication and engagement and sustainability. And my hope was just to have a discussion draft here for you to start your discussion so that you can settle on as a council, those, those statements of values that you, that you would like to, to adopt. I guess I would say. So I don't have anything to add beyond just, I did some work to edit everything into one place, into a statement in these three concepts. And I have no pride of authorship at all. It truly was designed for you to, as a launching point for your discussion.
So discuss. Who's got thoughts? I, again, I really appreciate the sort of three areas, the, you know, what, what we value, what does this mean and what we will do. I will tell you that some of my friends here on the screen, they have a Myers-Briggs behavior style that they will probably say, do needs to be more specific. Some actions, not more talk about what the value is, but what are some of the action steps? So I'm looking at Mr. Carey and saying that that might be one of the comments he's going to ask us. What are some, you know, really more, what do we do in these things? But other than that, I think overall the format is fabulous. And I'm not sure if we have an appetite for wordsmithing here tonight or if we really want to talk more generally. If folks have ideas about that, please share. I'm going to, Counselor Oberst and then McKeel and. If folks have ideas about that, please share. I'm gonna, Counselor Oberst, and then McKeel and Carey.
I was just going to start out with a sustainability statement as the first one. First of all, I think that it's a really well-phrased piece in a lot of ways. I, there's a little bit of wordsmithing that might need to go into this one, not a lot. And when I get to the what we will do section, you know, noticing what this means that we call out other forms of, of things that we want to make be sustainable, financial, built, social capital, et cetera. But when we get down to what we do, we seem to be mostly talking about the environmental. And I'd like to consider extending what this means into what we will do and, you know, kind of covering those bases. Overall, this, this really speaks to me, this, the sustainability statement. And I think Marty, you've done a good job of saying what that means to me as a city council member and, you know, trying to lead a city. This is, just nails it. It's, it's really well done. You, you pulled together some nice aspects.
Well, actually, respectfully, Counselor Oberst, I thought what, what happened in the what this means was provided the details of the areas that this, the statement addresses. And then what happened in what we will do, it compacted them into very nicely, the environment, the economy, and the community. So I actually, other than possibly a comma here and, or here or there, and I wouldn't even like really speak to that because I think it actually stands well on its own. I like the sustainability statement as is. Nice job, Madam City Manager.
I'll take that criticism, Carol.
Well, I, I guess I kind of see what you mean, right? So in what we do, if we are interested in keeping the, and the community capital, right? So this is a, a social science theory about seven kinds of community capital. And if we are going to keep those, all, all seven of them, or any part of the seven of them, then to kind of refocus, what do we do under each of them, or how do we address others than the economy and environment? But if we take them out of the above and leave them in the bottom, that's fine as well.
And you're very gracious, Counselor Oberst.
I'm, I'm not sure I was calling for taking them out of the above, but rather extending them down to the below. You know, calling out environmental economy or community is three words out of that whole paragraph. And I just wanted to make sure that we drew attention to those other factors that weren't just environmental, maybe just a little bit more blatantly. That's all. Again, I can live with it as, as it stands, no problem.
I, I'd be fine if you just took those, what, what'd you say, Madam Mayor, six, seven words and just pulled them back down and repeated. I thought it was literally nicely done, but it'd be fine if it was more clear. So I'm retracting what I said, so never mind.
Well, I, I see what you mean, John, in that then we are very specific in the what we will do, that we talk about renewable energy, recycling models, habitat ecosystems, and carbon footprint. Those are very much on what is called the natural capital. And, and so very detailed about what we'll do about preserving our natural capital.
That's it. That's, you nailed it. That's exactly it.
Really nothing about how we'll preserve financial capital or our infrastructure or social capital, those kind of things. So. And so the what we will do statements probably could take a lot more work. Counselor Belts, help us.
Well, it, the, I don't know how this falls in the grand scheme of all of this, but I remember there was a conversation last time about, are we talking about council? Are we talking about city? And so clearly, this is focused on council. But I'm a little concerned then about the very last sentence. Recruiting, hiring, and retaining a diverse workforce sustains our ability to equitably serve our community. We don't make any hiring decisions other than the city manager. So I'm not sure if that's a clear statement. I understand the purpose of saying that, but we may want to make sure it's clear. We're not talking about us hiring people for the city. So I don't know how to word that differently. Maybe I'm not understanding it.
Yeah. Or does that fit under sustainability? I mean, I think that's another thing. If you look at the overlaps, right? We've got a lot of good overlap, and it's important to call out equity and inclusion and diversity and everything. But that statement is maybe not, obviously, we will best sustain our equity diversion, diversity and inclusion in a hiring practices. But is, is that part of the sustainability statement or part of the equity? I think that's gonna be hard because we're saying everything we do will have these three lenses or telescopes or magnifying glasses. So how much do we repeat ourselves in each one? And how much do we make these more distinct? Counselor Salinas Oliveras, and then Counselor McKeel.
Yes, I actually like the connection. And I think that last sentence goes with the cultural, political, human, and financial aspect. And, and I, and as far as, you know, people understanding whether or not we are the hiring bodies, I don't think that's, I guess, as critical as really stating that we're going to encompass the whole meaning of sustainability, including the cultural, political, the human, the financial built. And, and this is how we are stating it in the sustainability statement. Because it does make a difference in how we sustain those who work with us. I mean, I think it's evident in how long people stay with the city. That speaks very well to how we treat and how we sustain our employees and how that, that generates all this continued good work and knowledge that we need for the city. And so I, I think that statement needs to be in there, just, just because it does talk about our human capital. It talks about, you know, our cultural capital and, and our people power make the difference for everything else that we want to sustain. And if we can't sustain our people capital, if we can't sustain our employees, our, our, you know, the people we work with, then it's gonna be really difficult to sustain anything else. So somewhere in this statement, that has to be in there. That's my two cents.
And Carol?
I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to think if I could say anything that's beyond what Counselor Salinas Oliveros already said. But I, I think those last two sentences in the, in, on this, in the what we will do are very clearly tied to the economy. Because if you are not recruiting, hiring, and retaining a diverse workforce, you are not really sustaining your local economy. What you're doing is, is kind of, is, is, is a limping fashion of your economy if you're not bringing everybody in. And I think also, there's already economic models, looking at the renewable energies, using recycling models, protecting the habitat. There's already economic models that show how much a lack of climate-friendly, you know, as our climate goes more downhill, it's costing us more money. So tonight, Mr. Howard was talking about how we needed to have warming stations. Well, if we're doing warming stations, we're not making parks. So it is costing us. And I think to have those statements in, sorry, I'm pointing to my other screen. Having those statements in this for sustainability actually does immediately address the economy.
Oh, yeah. Don't disagree that, that, that there are overlaps there. I'm just saying, what level of detail do you put in, in the what do we do, right? Do we, do we put a, a less granular level of awareness of the economy? And looking at our climate, a climate resolution, we can put that as a to-do, right? Rather than listing out all the various things that affect natural capital, which then do affect economic capital and social capital and cultural capital. So, okay. And John, did you have something? And then Roxanne?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I like the inclusion of the final sentence. I don't like the way it's written. To Roxanne's point, I think we could say something to the effect that create an environment where, or create policies where recruiting, hiring, and retaining a diverse workforce sustains our ability to equitably serve our community. So something that they, that's more of a, of an action that we would be taking. The sentence to me that, that sort of just is hung, hangs out there and doesn't, I, I don't see that, it, it doesn't seem to fit with the others, is the one right prior to that. That we acknowledge that sustainability includes changing our system that have denied opportunities to those historically underrepresented. That's probably a fact. Well, I'm sure it's a fact. I don't know that that's an action statement. You know, if we're gonna create an environment, we're going to encourage creativity and, and, and beyond, and seeking renewable. And then we have this sort of other one that, that didn't seem to fit in there. So I don't know, maybe somebody else sees a, a nexus of that with others. I, I don't.
And you're, you were nodding vigorously, so that appeared to.
One, one, let, let me add one more thing. I do think if, based on our conversation earlier, somewhere along the line in the what we do, we need to reference that we will work towards a climate crisis resolution of some sort. That's third, but I think we've become a little more specific.
Okay. So Roxanne, anything to add before we go back to Carol?
No, just, that's exactly what I was trying to get to, is I, I believe the statement should be there. It's just that we don't do the hiring. I just, it's just that. So thank you, John. You did perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
Is it okay? So actually, thank you, Counselor Carey, because nice, good eyes are editing, whatever. The, that statement, we acknowledge that sustainability includes changing our systems. That sentence actually, I think, might be better because you're right, it's not a what we will do. But yes, and I saw Cease go like this. Yeah, push, put it up into the second section maybe because it fits better there. So nicely done. Yeah.
And Rebecca?
I was just gonna say, with all those edits that we've spoken about, I think we're, in my opinion, pretty close on this one.
So we can maybe, maybe get another draft out of it that Marty can send back out to us. And Counselor Oberst?
So we moved that sentence up, and the last sentence in what this means is wrapped around the same concept at some level with social equity being the last item on the list. So perhaps those two sentences, next, next to last, and what we will do gets moved up into what this means and gets mashed together with sustainability includes, and see if you can come up with a single sentence there. Just a suggestion. I'm not gonna try, try to do it. And to Roxanne's point that we don't do the hiring, I would say that these, this at some level is marching orders for the city manager too. And I think she is wise enough to understand that when council says you need to march this way, that she should probably pay attention to that or give us a really good reason why she disagrees. So, you know, I, I, I can take, I like John's edit. I think it works. But I wasn't concerned that John's edit works very well.
Do you have what you need?
I have what I need.
She has what she needs. We shall move to communication and engagement.
I have, I have one question in, in Counselor Oberst's comment. We're not losing that sentence, right, about, okay, all right, great, thank you. It sounded like we were mashing it together, but I think it's a good sentence. Okay.
All right. Communication and engagement. Overall thoughts? Picky thoughts? What you got?
Rereading it.
I, I, I think, I, I like this one as well, although, then I said, oh, you're right, you're right, yeah. But I, there was just one sentence, and not to wordsmith, but I think there, like, there's a missing word or something. One, two, three, I think the fourth sentence in the, in the what this means section. And I've read it a couple times, but that doesn't mean my eyes blurred and I just didn't. But it looks like there might be something missing in there.
Yeah. Build many connections and partnerships in the city with partners and regionally.
Yes.
Yeah, that sucks.
I think, well, I think that the S should come off the word engagements.
Right.
Start. So the idea is that the act of engaging serves to build partnerships. So probably possible to simplify.
In the city and regionally, yeah.
And maybe just don't need the with partners and the just, and partners in the city and regionally. I think maybe that's it. It's just with partners can be taken out. Yeah.
Thank you. Everybody's got a comment.
Oh.
Well, Rebecca?
Yes, I was, I was going to say, I was just gonna suggest where, where it was connections and partnerships in the city with partners, and maybe partnerships in and out of the city and regionally, and take out with partners altogether. And then there was the other couple one that had community engagement creates the most effective public policy, thoughtful, encouraging, that engagement is critical to serving our community, I thought. And then the last sentence, I thought maybe just switching the last two sentences around, one before the other, just because when you try to read thoughtfully encouraging the engagement right after community engagement, I don't know. Maybe that's too picky, but I was trying to read it and making it flow. And when I read it out loud, it just didn't flow for me. And maybe that was just the way I was talking. I don't know. It's not a huge edit. It's not a big deal. That's just my two cents. But I, I think overall, I think it looks very nice.
I think another way to do that, Rebecca, that's a good point. And again, the wording is the, grammar's not that great. But another way to do that too is the Monmouth residents and our partners should know how decisions that are arrived at and their intended effect, which also is bad grammar, could, maybe we can make that an action step, right? You know, that we will ensure that Monmouth residents understand how our decisions are arrived at, dangling part of simple. And so, so maybe we can reword that part, move it down. Okay. I'll work on that. John C. and Chris Lopez.
Um, you know, I, I, I'm just, I, I made a couple notes on this, like, over the weekend and haven't been back to it. So I'm, I'm sort of catching up in my, in my mind. A sentence that I would suggest that is modified somewhat would be in the what we will do. It's the fourth one up. Everyone who wants and needs to be involved with the city knows how to access what they need. I don't like that sound. With, with, well, what we could say, to ensure that, that those who want or need to be involved with the city knows or understands how to access, you know, what they need. It's, it's, make it, make it an actual statement rather than a declarative. It's, it's, make it, make it an action statement rather than a declarative law.
Good. Chris, and then John Oberst?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, you know, I, I'll, I'll start, I was pretty, pretty quiet in the last portion of the discussion. I'll start by saying that, you know, I'm just blanket really happy with these. But I do feel that in the communication engagement, as well as, I know we're not there yet, but I'll say it now, so I don't have to say it again, as well as the DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion statement, the what we value, I, I feel that those portions are too long in both of these statements. The length of the what we value in the sustainability statement, it's two lines plus three words, and that, that's just right to me. The goal therein being that these are things that if we're going to live them, if we're going to weave them into everything we do, they have to be things that we can easily memorize, easily roll off our tongues, and if, you know, you're speaking to someone down in the ice cream parlor in the, in the park this summer after we're all vaccinated and enjoying the outdoors, when it, when it's sunny and beautiful and warm, someone says, well, what, what's, what's Monmouth doing this year? I want to be able to, off the top of my head, say exactly these three things, and they need to be a little shorter to be able to do that.
Yeah, I like that a lot. John O.
So I wasn't going to go here, but thanks, Chris. I would simply drop the first sentence on that, what we value, and say, we believe that community engagement is the heart of successful city government, governance. We value what every individual brings to help move our city forward. And the last sentence somehow, and I, I had it and now I've lost it, to help our city move forward, we want to build strong partnerships, and I just made a run on sentence, and share Monmouth's story, or just end it at, we want to build strong partnerships. And see if we can shorten that up by dropping a sentence or two. And this goes way back in the discussion. Marty, when you say, community engagements build many connections, and this is in the second section, many connections and partnerships in the city with partners, were you thinking outside partners when you put that word partners in there? Is that intended to stand for outside partners?
That was my sense.
I think it was, I, I'm, I'm frankly not sure at this point, but I, I think that.
I think that was my bad.
I think the idea was to call out partners inside and outside the city.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, my, my words on that would be to simply say, build connections and partnerships within the city with outside partners and regionally. And that would cover pretty much everybody, unless we want to go ahead and say statewide, and anybody else who will talk to us, you know?
Oh, so do we, does, is there a heartburn around the Monmouth City Council believes that community engagement is the heart of successful city governance? We value what every individual brings to help move our city forward, and one other little bit of a sentence there. Those would be our two sentences in, something like that. Takes out empowerment. Does that give anybody heartburn?
The, the only thing I see in that is that very last sentence is softer than the others. It's we want to build. Why not just say, we build strong partnerships? Because we believe, we value, we build strong partnerships and share Monmouth's story, period.
Well, I wonder if you just want to say, we share Monmouth's story proactively, because the next, the next section talks about building strong partnerships. So, I'm sorry, Counselor Selena Salaveros, I jumped in there and you had your hand raised. I'm sorry.
No, I just had a, I just had a quick thought, and let's see if I can remember it. On the last one, where it says, we, okay, so, we value what every individual brings to help our city move forward, we build, as Roxanne was saying, and we build strong partnerships, empower our community, and share Monmouth's story, or something, something like, you know, in that sense, and then you get empowerment in there, but you don't get the whole entire sentence, because I do also agree that we need to shorten it. So, I don't know, that's, that's my fee.
Okay, John O.
My, my version is sort of like that, in that I say, we value strong partnerships and what every individual brings to help our city move forward, and mashing those last two together. I didn't get empowerment in Rebecca, I'm sorry.
I like, I like empowerment in there, though. I, I think that'd be, I think, I do think it's good to have that in there.
I think we can work with that. John Carey, one, one other thought on this, any?
Yeah, just a quick one, and I don't really have anything specifically, and it's not a complaint. One of the things that we, that we talked about yesterday, or the last time we discussed this, was providing people with a reason to be involved. And, you know, we have town halls and nobody shows up. I mean, we are doing all of these things and we're not getting as many people as we want, so, so, something to reward, something to recruit, something to incentivize. I don't know what the, I don't know what the verb is, but, you know, some way to make people want to be there, you know? I, I, I don't know, I don't have it right now, and I'm not going to get it, but maybe somebody else does, or maybe it's in the next iteration.
No, you're trying to inspire people.
Well, yeah, or we give them the reason, you know, what's in it for them? We tell them what's in it for them, right? And that's one of our action things, and there's a nice way to say that, we'll figure it out, Rebecca.
Well, I'm not sure if this is, makes sense, but we are responsible to create equitable platforms of communications, let's see, that promote full, oh, communication and provide reason that promote full participation, or something like that, so that everyone in our city can thrive. So, I don't know if reason is the word, or inspiration is the word, but I, I hear what Counselor Carey is saying, and we need to continue to work on that message, but, but I think we can do it very simply. I don't think it's going to take a whole nother sentence.
Yep. I like that. That's a good way to get it in there, and we are responsible to create is another crappy sentence I think I wrote, so.
I don't think you wrote that.
John O.
So, I've been saying for 15, 20 years, that the hardest thing going is getting people out of their living room after dinner, and I have yet to figure out what the enticement is. I said cookies, this is Counselor Carey, because that sometimes helps, you know, offering people, come down for dessert. I'm a firm believer in food is a lubricant for conversation, too, so it's, it's hard. I mean, people work hard and they come home and they don't really want to leave their house to come down to City Hall in the evening, and how, how to make ourselves such a compelling thing that they want to, you know?
Sorry, sorry, Ben. It's after nine o'clock, and so we're not trying to solve the problems here, we're trying to word the statements, and we'll solve the problem.
Yeah, it's, it's tough, that's all.
Thank you, my friend. Okay, I think we're ready, we got a, a second draft will come out of that, so we're ready for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And let's, folks, let's start with the top, is, is, do we need to make that more impactful? And I hope Mr. Lopez has an idea, and he does.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. My idea was really just bumping around the sentence and removing, removing something. I feel free to hate it, love it, whatever, but I think we can lose the first sentence, as much as I like the portions about being historically represent, underrepresented. I think we start by saying, we are committed to courageously practicing equity to guide all of our work. That is, that's a powerful statement. And then say, we are better when we acknowledge and include all viewpoints and experiences, and we actively recognize and strive to overcome the systemic and historical barriers that some of our community members have faced. I, I, that's something I can remember, and I think you guys did a great job at crafting it. I think that, just condensing it there, I'm happy with.
Okay, that, that gets major thumbs up, unless John had a slight comment on that one? Carey?
I personally don't like the word courageously. You know, it's, it's, it sounds like it's a Herculean deal, and, and that we're all, we're all heroes because we're doing it. I'd prefer something like enthusiastically, or, you know, something else. When I read the courageously, I thought, why? You know, I don't feel a need to be called courageous for practicing equity as a guide to all of our work. Small thing, small thing.
I, I want to hear Rebecca's thought on this. You know, that was a specific word, I believe she selected, so.
Yes, and that was, that's a specific word I selected out of our core value session, and that was, that's one of our core values. And so, and, 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 you know, yes, Counselor Carey, it may not be like, oh, we're so brave to do diversity, equity, inclusion, but when you think about it, we kind of are, just because it's going to take, it's going to take effort, and it is, and there are going to be times where we're going to be faced with decisions that we need to find that courage to make those decisions. And so, you know, and, and maybe courageously isn't the word, but I think we need a strong word in there, like courageously, just because it takes work to practice, it takes work to move towards, towards diversity, equity, and inclusion.
John O.
And I appreciate the wording, and when you first brought it up, Rebecca, the session with you, you, Chris and I working through it, it rang, but I also wonder about, just if committed doesn't say the same thing. We are committed to practicing equity. I, you know, you can just say, we're going to practice equity, but if we say we are committing ourselves to this, does that, does that do it? I don't know. I just, I'm trying to kind of wrap around what John said on this, too. It didn't hit me quite right when I read it either, and I wasn't sure why.
And I, you know, and I could live with that, if we make it a strong statement, we are committed to practicing equity and guiding, that guide all of our work. As long as it's a strong statement, I, I can live with that.
Chris?
Yeah, um, I like courageously, I can live without it, but, but I like courageously. And, and I'll, I'll tell you what it means to me. It means to me that there, there are going to be times, and I, I don't know what those are, but there are going to be times that, you know, we're faced with difficult decisions, difficult monetarily, difficult within the public sphere, difficult within our own dynamic, and, you know, it, it is going to take real courage to face those, to do what we're saying we're going to do in this statement. So by saying that we're courageously doing it, nah, that, that, this, this sentence isn't courageous, but by saying this sentence, we're committing to that courage, ourselves to that courage in the future, and that's why I like it.
John O.
So what if we drop courageously down to the second, the now second sentence, the last sentence, and we're better when we acknowledge and include all viewpoints and experiences, and we courageously strive to overcome the systemic and historic barrier some of our community members have faced? And drop it into the second sentence, and say, instead of actively recognizing, strive, say courageously strive to. You can't be courageous without being actively, having active recognition, I think. Don't know, just trying to pull all this around together.
Yeah, I, the, the first sentence is saying what we're committed to, and the second sentence is kind of going into, well, we're better, better when. I still like it up top, but I'm, I'm happy scrapping it, I'm happy moving it to the bottom, but if I were to move on this myself, I'd leave it in up top. I recognize that I'm part of the group, and I'm, I'm more than happy to, you know, to, to move on without it.
John C.
I was just going to say that, that, you know, courageous decisions center on land use, budget decisions, it doesn't take any courage for me to make a commitment to equity at all. I mean, that's a, that's a value. I mean, I don't, I don't even think second about that, personally. I don't reckon most of you do either, if you've really thought about that. I mean, the tough ones are the land use things and the, the budget stuff. This is simple, because that's what we believe in. I mean, to me, but again, I'm not going to die on my shield on this one.
I love that, John, but having had face-to-face conversations with people in our community who don't think by emphasizing equity, diversity, inclusion, we're actually over-representing some people, and having to, having to suck up my courage to be able to tell them that they were full of, I, I, I think you'll find there may be decisions we, it will take courage to defend because of some other people's values, not ours.
Yes, I, I agree. I see it every Sunday on the corner of United Maine, it hasn't slowed down, and if you could see the anger, the people hanging out of their windows, stopping in the middle of the intersection, just to tell us to go fuck this, that, whatever, and pretty, and hanging out, threatening us, it's, it's ugly. It is ugly, but yet, we find the courage to keep going. And not knowing what we're going to get that day, not knowing, you know, what's going to happen that day, we show up. So, it, we are going to have difficult conversations, and I appreciate what you're saying, Counselor Carey, and, you know, I, I feel honored to be serving on this council with you, because I, you know, that, I, I wish that it was the same for everybody, what you're saying, but it just isn't right now.
So we'll move on. It's almost 20 after, so I think hopefully we can do a little bit of editing in these next couple, in the next 10 minutes, determining, I guess, I'm looking at sort of the second, the next section, and Marty was generously trying to use all of the, the words we used, and obviously some of them are repetitive. Are there some that stand out, folks, as being really important to include, or some that seem to be redundant? And I'll go with Rebecca, and then John O.
Oh, yeah, for, for me, I think it's down, let's see, if we count, one, two, three, four, five, six. I do feel it's really important to have, we acknowledge our systems and culture that have created barriers and excluded Black, Indigenous, and people of color, BIPOC, LGBTQ, 2IA+, and then I added, and other marginalized communities, because there are other marginalized communities that are not included here. And to take out the next sentence, the people by race, ethnicity, gender, sex, sexual orientation, only because it's mentioned up here, and it kind of repeats, maybe adding sexual orientation up here, but other than that, I think we say it, we say what's in this sentence ahead of time. And then the last piece of this, we wish you create a community with honesty and fairness, where we can engage all members and create a community where everyone belongs, and just take out of the Monmouth community together. But that's, that's my two cents. I just think it's really important to have and to be intentional, especially in the statement, or community members are not going to believe what you're saying in the statement otherwise.
Thanks. And I think what Marty was maybe trying to do there is say the- Thanks. And I think what Marty was maybe trying to do there is say the "race, ethnicity, origin, ability" could go one or the other place. I think that was either her option. It's where it is to start with, or it's in the list, the list of other things. So, if there's a sense of that. John O., and then Chris?
So, I've said I don't like lists, but I like the first list, because, and I think in part it's the list I grew up with. I can't tell you how many times I heard age, gender, well, okay, age, race, ethnicity, nationality, whatever. And the nice thing about the list in that form is that just about everybody can find themselves on that list somewhere. When you start to have a more specific list that calls out specific subgroups, that's where it gets harder. I love this first list. I'm fine with Rebecca's list down lower, to keep that in there as well. I was concerned about having it be the lead off to everything, and I do want to include it. So, it starts to pull together, and I think me, you know, my concerns and Rebecca's concerns at the same time, by heading down this road. Just, and I got to say again, whoever did the writing here between the two, you've struck a nice balance of all the things we've talked about.
Chris?
Yeah, you know, Counselor Oberst beat me to it. I'm just going to reaffirm what he said, that wonderfully written. And I am glad that age is included in there, and that we were able to strike a balance between the two. I was going to suggest that the first portion that Rebecca had listed there, instead of that second "or" portion, was the one that we go with. And I really, I'm impressed by the tightrope that you all walked for us. Thank you.
John?
You know, I read this, and I didn't love it. And so, I went looking for something else. And I went to our inclusivity statement that we had created in 2017, I think, at the height of the immigration faux pas. And while it's written a little bit in that direction, there's a whole lot of good stuff in there. And so, my intent was to try to go in, pull some of those things out, provide an alternate to this other one, the one we're talking about. And, you know, have another alternative. I think there's some really good stuff in that. Lane wrote that. He pulled it, plagiarized it from somewhere. And it was good, because we don't really talk about a whole lot citizenship. And, you know, the difference between citizens and residents. And it might be referenced once, but we, there's a whole variety of things. And so, anyway, I would, and it was on the website at one point, and then pulled off. For some reason, it's hard to find. But I would encourage you to read that, just for ideas, on how we might phrase some things. And Phyllis, it was on the webpage at one point. It's no longer there, but I could find it. Search it deep, and did find it. But anyway, it's good reading.
I've got a record, John, it was entirely original composition.
Counselor Carrie, you'll find this either funny or sad. But Phyllis, actually, the inclusivity resolution has been a feature on the front page of our website until about two days ago, when we shifted it so that the City Hall project would have front billing. But you can still find the inclusivity resolution on the City Council page. So, there's a link there, and I know you have to dig for it, and I'm sorry for that. We can, we'll write that balance soon.
John O.?
Just one other word. Partway through the last section, we say, I've lost it. There it is, okay. Identify systemic barriers and develop cultural competency. Cultural competency is a mighty high bar. To really become competent in another culture is, you know, almost a lifetime endeavor. And we're talking about multiple cultures, so I'm wondering about cultural awareness. Simply making ourselves aware of alternate cultures and not trying to claim we're going to become competent in. Because that's, I just, I'm concerned that we're putting the bar up for staff that isn't really, maybe more than can be realistic.
Carol, and then Chris?
Actually, cultural competency has a specific meaning, and it's okay, I think, to use the word as it's written. It has, it has meaning, and nobody expects you to be able to understand all cultures from that statement. But it is meaning sensitivity that you can have with all cultures. So, it actually is, it's a definition kind of word. So, I think we need to leave it in there.
Okay, I read it as I saw it, not knowing that it has a separate definition. And I think most people will read it as written rather than as defined. That's all.
I think this is part of an education process.
Chris?
Yeah, you know, I wanted to draw back to something that Counselor Carrie said about the inclusivity resolution. And I believe that most of you have read that. I know for a fact that I've personally handed it to a few of you. And so, Counselor Carrie, fear not that individuals have read it here. And I've actually been out, and I've handed it to a handful of people out in town. I think that that was a good bit of writing, but I'm really excited to build on it instead of rehash it. And I think that this piece here really addresses a lot of things that are timely now that we need to address.
I think in interest, again, of just a couple more minutes, I know that in the "What We Will Do" section, there might be a couple of duplications or ways to, you know, for example, it says, "To truly serve, we will learn and be receptive to all individuals, identities of race, ethnicity, gender." That's a repeat, obviously, of our statement above, so perhaps we can edit that down a little bit. I think there's wishing to create a community with honesty and fairness. And then down below, "We seek honesty and fairness with engaging our communities." So, that's a little bit duplicative. So, I think if, unless anyone has anything other real specific, I think now we can probably move to a draft, a second draft on this one. Or if you have really good thoughts about wording and condensing or expanding, maybe forward those on to Marty from here. Let John make the last comment, and Carol make the last comment.
My comment's off topic. It's something just before closing.
Thank you. Carol?
Just, we will set the example by instilling and training. It's like, is there something missing after instilling? Yeah, so it looks like there's like, you don't want equity there, but there's maybe a word, but.
Yeah, that's good. We'll take a look at that. There's definitely some weird word mashup going there.
Really, Madam Mayor, Madam City Manager, I am so, so happy with the work that you did. So, and you have to sit and have your writing just torn up and wrenched and reworked. And thank you for your courageousness for that. And nicely done, really nicely done.
Great. No, thanks all of you.
We've got enough for the next draft. Thank you.
Lovely. John, you had a last comment. I also want to, we've got the the College Manor Apartments. We're doing the mural that is on the side of that building Thursday. We're going to be videotaping and getting ready to do the big reveal there. So, I just wanted to remind folks of that. That's a really exciting new piece of public art that was partly supported by our Arts and Culture Commission. And I wanted to be sure, mention that. So, Counselor Oberst?
What time?
First of all, what's the address on that apartment house?
When, where?
Well, I thought you all got invitations. No. Let me see. The... Yeah, College Manor Apartment 265 College Street. And I'm trying to see. I have this huge script thing about all the different things happening.
Thursday at?
At noon. I think it's, we have a photo and video moment of the VIP group. Maybe? I don't know. I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
It starts at 11:00.
Yeah, the guests start at 11:00.
Guests start at 11:00.
Yeah.
11:00 AM, guests start arriving at 265 College Street for the College Manor Apartments mural unveiling. Thank you. Thanks, Phyllis. All right, and...
My comment is primarily for my fellow first-go counselors. But you probably got an email from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission about you filing your stuff. Don't forget, it's important. It's one of those ones that sometimes drops down your box. Goodbye! And it's relatively quick and easy for those of us without too many entanglements in life, I think. So, be sure to get that done. And unless somebody else has something, Madam Mayor, I would love to make a motion.
Actually, I have one more thing. Hold up. I have, my internet's going out. Am I in? You're all moving, okay. Actually, Pride Month is coming up in June, and I was wondering if we could request that the city, or I don't know how to do this, we put up a banner for Pride Month? Or I know the streetlights have the two metal rods. You could put the pride flag on the streetlights. It'd be great going up and down Main Street with a pride flag on both sides. So, I don't know how to do that, other than to say, can we put up a flag or banner?
Yeah, that's a great question. We do change those out. The flagpole banners partly is a project of the Monmouth Downtown Association. There are some flags, some banners that exist in city inventory. Sort of researching where you would find banners and acquire banners, and how much they would cost, and then figuring out how that would be paid for. If that's a project that the Downtown Association is interested in helping fund, or if we need to try to find something in city funds. And I think Marty can work with them to take a look at that, and Suzanne, and see what the cost would be, and who will bear that, would be an issue. So, thanks, though, for that.
Will we have information about that? I'm not putting pressure on it, but it's like, June's going to come really fast. Will we be able to have information that?
Counselor McHale, I am researching this, and I am not sure when I get information back, I will report to the council. And we'll try to do that with enough lead time to be able to make it happen. But I don't, I'm asking the questions now about who owns them, how to obtain them, and what the cost is. As the mayor said, as soon as I have that information, I'll bring it back to council and report back.
Well, there's active club on the university campus that might have something as well.
Thank you.
And I'm thinking we might be able to, if, oh, so sorry, my brain stops working at nine o'clock every time. If we can't, if we don't have the money, there may be people willing to pitch in to make sure we can have the money to do that. So, that's why I was like, if we find out sooner, I can find out who wants to pitch in. So, no pressure, Marty. I was just trying to, like, figure out if we need to ask people to help pitch in. That's all. So, thank you.
If we do, I will let you know that, too. Thank you.
All right, and that motion, Mr. Oberst?
I propose we all go home, except we already are, so, most of us, anyway. So, I would move adjournment.
All in favor, please stick your hand up by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, you guys, thank you again. Great work, really, really appreciate it. Have a great evening. We'll try our new format, starting at our next meeting. And I think we can move this along. So, appreciate it, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Good to see everybody.